You can't, even in the situation where his client...
When you told me about your vague, what you said and stuff, and you had just put a point of receiver on the...
The paper.
Oh, great.
It's starting to...
When you tell me it's on the front page, the paper does probably have that thing.
It is.
I think.
Good morning. Please rise for...oh, I'll call to order the May 5th, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll. Commissioner Leo Molitor.
Present.
Commissioner Stephen Onstott.
Present.
Chair Nora Adukas.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Westner.
Present.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
Now's the time for public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda, seeing none. Moving on, we will have AP 100013. This is a continuation of a matter that we first heard on February 17th. So now it would be time for a presentation and a staff report. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Both the appellant and the applicant wish to request a continuance from your commission, so I'll just let them come up and make their pitch, and if the hearing goes on, we're ready to make a presentation.
Okay, before we start the...we still have to do disclosures, right?
No, this is simply a procedural matter. You had asked that this matter come back to you for an update, so if, in fact, we get into the hearing, I think disclosures would be appropriate at that point in time.
Okay. Please state your name and scenario.
Yes, I'm Lindsey Nielsen. I'm counsel for the appellant, Ed Borges. Go ahead.
And I'm Kate Nice-Lunder, on behalf of the applicant, the Tash family. Lindsey and I have been working hard at trying to get a settlement in the underlying lawsuit. In fact, we worked so hard, we got the county knocked out of the case. So you guys aren't involved anymore, but we have not...we've made progress, but we are not yet there.
As in any litigation, it doesn't follow a very clear path, and so it's complicated. And Mr. Neves' clients have agreed, let's hold this part of it off until we can see if we can actually resolve the case. Don't hold your breath, but...
We're trying. We're definitely trying.
We think it may conceivably be possible. So we would ask that this matter be put over for 60 to 90 days. There doesn't seem to be a huge hurry to occupy the Planning Commission's time as long as this progress has been made.
Okay. Is there input from...or questions of the appellant and the applicant or of county staff?
Yeah, I just would ask...I'm sorry. Just procedurally, do we have any issues as far as fast-tracking things and/or the county's exposure? That's to both staff members.
The Planning Department doesn't have a...the Planning Division doesn't have any real issues whether it's continued or not. It's not really any kind of a metric that we're...
So there's no fast-track?
No.
Okay.
And as far as our exposure, I'll leave the exposure questions up to Mr. Quon.
I have before me a request for dismissal that was filed in the Ventura County Superior Court, April 8th, 2011. It's what we were seeking for, to be out of this case. We didn't think that we needed to be in the matter, so we're out as both counsel for appellate and an applicant have indicated, so I don't see any exposure at this point in time.
Okay, and is there a timeline? You want it at 60 or 90 days? Is there...
Yes, ma'am.
60 or 90?
90 would be better.
90. Okay, what is the commission's pleasure?
I have...
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Onstott, question.
I'd like to ask a question of staff as soon as he's through.
Question.
I have a question, sir. We've prepared for this twice. Counties prepared for this twice. Is there any detriment to the county to continue in this matter? Other than preparing a third time to hear the matter?
Well, the preparation was done at the first hearing. There has been no additional preparation for this hearing, and we're ready to go. We're ready to go on February 17th with exactly the same material. So there's...the only time has been the time for me to walk downstairs and come here and address your commission.
And staff's position hasn't changed in regard to its recommendation?
No.
Okay. Lindsey, Kate, with any degree of certainty, can you tell us the possibility of settlement? Because we've prepared for this thing twice, and quite frankly, I'm not in favor of continuance unless you can tell me there's some probable success in settlement.
Well, Commissioner Onstott, we've called previously this hearing, so we didn't have to occupy the Planning Commission's time, whether we were informed we have to be here because it was predetermined. If I knew what cases would settle and what wouldn't, my fee structure would be totally different. But these are strong-willed people, both individuals, and it's kind of an esoteric issue over this road that seems to be the problem. And I can't speak for Kate's clients, who seem very reasonable, and it's...I wish I could answer that. It takes time to move somebody from position A to position B.
Well, you're not on the cusp of settlement, then?
No, we are not.
No.
We have made efforts. We had two sessions. We had a deposition of the appellant over two days, and at both days, we started the day and ended the day with, can we get this settled? What can we do? The parties spoke at both sessions of the deposition very reasonably, batted back and forth, different scenarios to settle the case. It was, I thought, and Lindsey did too, that both of those sets of discussions were very productive. But in the meantime, Mr. Borges has been out of town repeatedly, so every time we try to get something more set up, he's been on business in Texas, he comes back, has to deal with business here, and then we're just not getting very far. So I do think we are making progress. We definitely have the appellant's attention, and he's listening to what we have to say. We've got settlement offers on the table. As Lindsey said, I can't tell if he's going to take them, but they're definitely talking. They're talking reasonably.
Actually, it's very surprising to me, as two neighbors, let's sit down and discuss anything. I mean, there's no animosity that you normally see in something like this. So that's why I'm...I'm a fool.
Can you estimate the impact of the resolution of this matter today, if it goes forward on your negotiations?
Well, the problem with it going forward today is that my clients aren't here, Mr. Borges isn't here, so I suppose it would be very, very short because we don't have anybody to testify. So if you are going to want it to move forward, I would ask another day, just simply because my clients aren't here, and neither is Mr. Borges. He's in Texas again.
Commissioner Onstott, the...if it's resolved, this all goes away. I mean, there would be no need for the Planning Commission to spend four hours or whatever it takes to go through this stuff. So if there's no detriment other than the fact that...and this is one of those unusual situations where both the applicant and the landowner agree, let's hold off at this point. So I'm not sure, other than some need to clear your docket, when the people involved themselves say, let's hold off, let's give this process some more time, why we would go.
I understand and appreciate what you're saying, but the five people up here and the county staff have prepared for this twice, and as far as I know, there was no request for a continuance in advance.
There was. There was, and I was told to show up here and ask you, not staff.
Well, I wasn't aware of it.
I made that...I didn't want...
Last week.
Staff.
Yeah, we didn't want anybody to...
I emailed them, and I said, please, so...
Did I miss something? Was there communicated to us a continuance request?
I believe one came in to Mr. Baca, although I think it's our understanding that since this is the commission that granted them the extension and told them to come back at this time and date, then they were to appear before this body.
Is that true, or could we not?
That was the decision back on February 17th, was that you set it for a date certain in the future, just to get a status report and update, and this is why it's back on your calendar for May 5th.
So regardless of whether they requested to continue jointly, we're here. It would be here.
It's within your jurisdiction. It's your matter. It's before you, and you're deciding, so you have to decide whether to continue it or not.
Well, then I apologize.
To allow the applicant and the appellant to just simply write letters in, this thing could be on our docket for years.
Oh, please, no.
I'm sorry. I was not aware. Personally, I would have agreed to continuance and avoided everybody's appearance, but I guess that's not possible or wasn't done.
Commissioner Molitor.
I, like Commissioner Onstott, don't like the idea of a continuance, but in reading the history of this, especially Kate, your account here, and reading the history, we've got two strong individuals out here, and I don't envy your position, trying to bring them together. I'm not happy either, but I would go along with the continuance, simply because of the historical problems that have gone on between these two, between the applicant and the appellant. So I would go along with it because it's an unusual situation, I think. That's my feeling. Madam Chair.
Are there other...yes, more discretion.
Since we've all been in these types of matters, the first thing that comes to my mind, you know, is there any party being harmed in the matter, since this is an appeal? And so therefore, the person that has been granted a matter that they cannot implement it simply because the appeal is in process, but since you're representing that your party is willing to forego that for this time, then that the issue of any harm to that party is off my plate. However, I agree with Onstott and Molitor. We set the next one. It's my decision to make a decision at that point in time, okay, simply for the reasons. And also, as you know, when somebody from here says down there, you can tell your clients it's going to get decided, that there will be not a third continuance.
I think we're going to be back. Given the history of the documents that were presented by the applicant's counsel, there's obviously been a land compatibility usage between Mr. Borges and the previous property owner, it appears, and it continues with the current property owner, the Tashes, so it wasn't resolved back then, and I'm not sure. Although the circumstances were different, obviously, it's a difficult thing to solve, so good luck. I hope you guys can solve it.
Thank you.
But I would agree with Commissioner Westner, and we need to finish it off.
Okay, so are we doing a date certain? Should we do a date certain? What should we do?
I think that would be up to your commission.
I think the date certain, was it helpful in motivating your clients to...no?
A drop-in date always helps.
Okay.
Have to work for it.
So do we...should we look at the calendar and see something 60 to 90 days out? Do we have anything that...
August 4th would be available. If you want to go 90 days, and the length of time is certainly up to your commission.
Yeah, looks good. But do we know the Planning Commissioner's availability on August 4th?
Not yet.
I don't think we've gotten that far out.
The only thing that we have on the calendar right now is June 2nd, where you're all going to be here, and we have an item.
Make it June 2nd.
That's really too short for us to accomplish anything, I'm afraid.
But not only that, but it's our new housing element for the county general plan, and I want to be able to focus on that. I have some very specific questions as far as low-income housing, so I would hate to have you and your party sit here because of that.
So what's the calendar look like, Danielle? When's the furthest out that we have a commitment?
We can just do June. We have to take your availability for July and August.
I can't give you my availability for July and August right now without my calendar here or anything else, but I think if you send out, if it's fine with the councils, if you send out your availability ahead, and then we all respond, you can pick a date that we're all going to be here within the 60 to 90 days and set it that way. Is that possible?
That's not a violation of the Brown Serial Act there, counsel?
I'm just looking at that right now, so you're ahead of me, Commissioner Westner.
I'm sorry.
As far as the continuance is concerned, I do believe we need a date certain to put this over to. So I would recommend that choosing a date that can change based upon the availability of the commissioners. So if you can choose a date 60 days out, then everyone knows we have a date certain, we comply with any technical requirements as far as noticing this matter, and that it also include the length that it'd be subject to change based upon the availability of a quorum of the commissioners.
Okay, can we use that to go ahead and decide to continue this?
Yes, yes, you can. If you can just choose 60 days from today, and then just say that that date is subject to change based upon the availability of a quorum of the Planning Commission.
Well, that would be July 5th, and I can guarantee you I'll be in Idaho catching fish.
We meet on Thursday, so it would be July 7th or July 14th.
I'm available first two weeks of July.
I won't be...well, I won't be available for July 5th, and I'm not sure on the 14th.
It's the 7th or the 14th.
All right, if I may, since we got this issue, and there's been a quest for 90 days, why don't I make a motion that we continue this for the final resolution on August 4th, subject to the availability as identified by the planning staff with proper notice to appellate and applicant?
That's fine.
That would be great.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, got it.
Thank you very much.
We'll see.
And please make it clear to your clients, it will be resolved after...
Believe me, they'll...no.
At this level.
Yes, exactly so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good morning. So now, item 6, live demonstration of Ventura County One-Stop Permitting Website.
Where's the sort of pop-up popcorn?
Get your keyboard all greasy, eating popcorn while at the computer.
I would vote, if they would have heard it today. It's ridiculous to put us off for the third time. Everybody prepare for the third time. What impact would the resolution of the matter be? It would force somebody to settle if we had voted on this today, either one way or another.
So good morning, commissioners. My name is Annie Shim. I'm from the Planning Division. Today, I'm here to present a live demonstration of the county's One-Stop Permitting Website. The One-Stop Permitting Website is a comprehensive online resource that combines land use permitting requirements from multiple county agencies in one place. The website resulted from the county's Get to Excellence Plan for the discretionary permit process, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2008. In response to customer input, the Get to Excellence Plan identified the need to create a virtual one-stop shop website that would provide easy online access to permitting information and resources for applicants, consultants, and other members of the public. For approximately six months, a group of county staff members from each of the 13 agencies that participate in the discretionary permit process worked with in-house IT staff to develop the interface and content of the website. On March 1st of this year, the website was launched to the public. On April 16th, a little over a month after its release, the website received the Award of Excellence for Planning Best Practices from the Central Coast American Planning Association. Using an online tool called Google Analytics, the county has measured how much traffic the website has generated over time. So from March 1st to April 26th, the website has received 1,213 visits, of which approximately 45% of these users have visited the website multiple times. Now, if I can direct your attention to the screen, I will briefly go over the interface of the website and highlight some of the resources that we have available. So on the screen, we have the One-Stop Permitting homepage. The website's interface is broken into two separate sections. The first section is the permitting guide, also known as the phases. You can access the phases by clicking on the top navigation bar here, and also, if you scroll down, you can also click on any of the buttons here. The permitting guide provides a brief overview of all the steps an applicant would typically go through to begin and complete the land use permitting process. Each phase has in-depth descriptions, instructions, links to resources, and helpful tips to assist an applicant through the application review process. For example, here in Phase 2, Project Site Research, we have provided key resources that an applicant can use to begin researching early in the process all of the land use constraints that may be applicable to the property. To begin the research process, an applicant would need to identify their assessor's parcel number. What they can do is they can scroll down, click here, and this link will take them to the tax collector's office webpage. Scroll down, and they can type in their address here, and a copy of their tax bill, their property tax bill, will come up, and they can retrieve their APN numbers from there. Once they have their APN, they can also look up the zoning designation by clicking on the link here, which will take them to a web-based resource called What's My Zoning? What they can do is they can type in their APN, click submit, and a web, interactive web-based GIS map will pop up that shows the property and also the zoning designation. We also have another link here that takes them to the assessor's office. By clicking on their APN right here and clicking on search, they can get a copy of their parcel map, where they can identify property boundaries, easements, and such. If you look here, we have a helpful tip box. These are scattered throughout the website. These helpful tip boxes just provide additional information, and that could assist an applicant and also expedite the process. Here, the helpful tip box explains that a property can have multiple APNs, and also it explains that having an APN on the property doesn't necessarily equate to a legal lot. And beneath it, we provide information about the legal lot status and how property owners can go through the process and determine whether or not their property is indeed a legal lot.
Do you have...
Yes.
If there's been a legal lot determination, will that roll up too? If there's already been...if someone's done a legal lot determination, will you find it?
No, we don't have anything online that's available for them, but they can contact the Planning Division here, and we have designated a staff member that can assist Also, we have links and descriptions to some of our county's land use policies. We have the general plan here, the area plans. We have other county ordinances like the Cultural Heritage Board ordinance, Mobile Home Park, you know, the Noe's ordinance. We also have the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance. Can you see this? Do you want me to zoom in a little bit closer, or is this fine? Okay.
It's fine. We're not that old.
So that's the permitting guide. The second section of the website is the county's, the departmental one-stop pages, which are located on the left-hand side here. We have all of the 13 participating agencies in the discretionary process represented in this website. All of the departmental one-stop pages have the same interface as shown here. Each department has the same eight navigation links. This right here is the welcome page. It has a brief description of the role and responsibility of the agency. There are links at the top of the page where you can go back to the one-stop homepage. We also have a link where you can go to the department's homepage. Also, we have public counter information here, and also contact information of a designated staff member right here. In the forms page, we have all the applications that an applicant may need depending on the scope of their project. We have all the links and descriptions. We also have the brochures page.
Excuse me?
Yes.
On the forms page?
Oh, yes.
Can you print online?
I'm sorry?
Can the applicant or the person que...querying the system, can he print the forms online?
Of course. Yes. All of these are PDFs, and most of them are fillable, so they can fill out their pertinent information and print it out. Okay, here are the brochures page, which are just public informational handouts. Because the Planning Division has such a wide array, we have a direct link to our public information page on our main existing website. We also have links to guidelines and standards. Here we have the ISAGs, laws and ordinances, and policies. Here we have the fees page. Each of the departments have their fee schedules available online now, and we also have a little brief description of how the fees are calculated. Here you can see we have a helpful tip box. If a user clicks on this link here, it takes them to a page where they can learn more about the top 12 ways to lower project review costs. So this is a nifty resource that we have available. And finally, we have the frequently asked questions page.
How were those questions determined? Just what do you experience with people coming up to the counter and telephone calls and such?
Exactly. We spoke to our public company staff.
Can we...can you slowly go through those...not slowly, but go through those facts?
Okay, of course.
What's a zoning ordinance? What's a subdivision ordinance?
Yes.
What's the next...no, and then what's the...
Okay. It's broken up into different categories.
How much will it cost? Why is it taking so...okay. All right, so they're good.
They're all those big questions.
Those are the questions I hear, too.
Well, they are. Now you can direct them to our website.
I have a question.
Yes.
What kind of feedback have you received from the people who have used the site? For example, you mentioned that 45% have used it more than once.
Yes.
Is there anything built into the...
I'm glad I asked.
...website where they can respond as if it was satisfactory, unsatisfactory, or comment what wasn't there? Is there an evaluation of it?
Currently, what we have is, we do have this link here at the bottom of the footer page where they can...it takes them to this online form. They can type in their information, and they can type in either technical questions or comments in general about the website, and then they can send it here. And what happens is it goes to a webmaster, and then he directs that information to us, where we follow up on it. Right now, what we're also doing is we're incorporating one-stop questions in our customer service evaluation that we send out to our discretionary permit applicants after they completed the process. So we also will be receiving feedback from them. Okay?
Sure you will.
I've also sent it out to a lot of the consultants that we work with, and I've been getting very positive feedbacks. One of the first things that I did get back is saying that the first time a consulting firm used it saved his clients hundreds of dollars of his staff having to do research because they...it's all in one place. So I've gotten a lot of good, positive comments back from the consultant groups.
Well, not just in land use planning, what she was going through and what I was seeing there, I can use in my office, cut my time and my client's bill significantly.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, you've cut my bill.
That's right.
During the development process of the one-stop, each department digitized information and developed new web-based resources that were previously not available online. One of many web-based resources that we have available is the screening map from the watershed protection districts, water course, and encroachment permit section. Here on the homepage, there's a link here. If you click on it, if you click on the link, it'll take you to an online interactive GIS map.
So could somebody just dial this up and find out whether or not they have a red line channel they worry about?
Exactly. Exactly. You can click on here, click on address search, type in your address, click on search, and then it'll take you to your parcel, like a regular Google map normally does.
Certainly may not like reselling.
Sell them do.
There you go. And it takes a little time. So as you can see, here's the red line channel, so depending on where the proposed project is, it may enter...you may have to contact the watershed protection district to determine whether or not you'd necessarily need a water course or encroachment permit. Another resource that I would like to point out is our public training advertisement that we have here on the left-hand side of the one-stop homepage. The county has developed monthly training workshops on submittal and processing requirements in various technical subject areas. On this page, you can find information on upcoming training sessions, and also click on the links here to get the PowerPoint presentations from past workshops. So currently, we are working...we are making ongoing improvements to the website, and we will be introducing more resources in the future, such as a news and announcement section. such as a news and announcement section where users can get all the information and updates regarding the land use permitting process. So this concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this moment.
When, when people go online and they say County Ventura, and you get Google, and you get the link on that homepage for County Ventura?
Yes.
Does One-Stop show on the homepage?
Glad you asked that. So going to the portal here, this is the main County Ventura website. On each of the links here, Living Here, Working Here, Visiting, it does include the One-Stop, but here on the homepage, it is kind of hidden, but it is here. It's the county land use permit. If you click on this link, it'll take you to the One-Stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Adriques.
When you went through and scrolled through the different interface, I think related to other departments, where's Code Enforcement at?
Code Enforcement?
Yeah. Is there an interface for that?
I don't know.
I'm just curious, and I love the website and everything it provides. Given the issue we find ourselves with, with complaint, violations, complaints against, regarding various permits, et cetera, CUP, for example, it's left to the, the process is left to the applicant to notify planning if a complaint's been filed, and there's a timeline to respond, et cetera, et cetera. However, notification of planning is verbally or telephonically done, as I understand, maybe computerized. I don't know, but there isn't anything in place that?
Well, we do have in our permitting guide, Phase Nine Condition Compliance Review. Since we place so much emphasis on getting a permit, we definitely felt the need to include a section about what happens after the permit has been approved. So this page does go in depth about what exactly the conditions of approval are, mitigation measures. We also explain the Condition Compliance Review process. And we also list out all the various examples of what is considered a permit violation. And we do have a helpful tip box that also states the Civil Initiative penalties, and we do provide a link for more information on that.
Okay. But no direct link to, complain directly to planning?
We do, we do have the, they have the links to the Condition Compliance Program here, to the Planning Division, and goes directly to the Planning Division. So we do have that information available.
So you can't check on compliance, or can't you?
I'm sorry?
Can you check on compliance of a conditional use permit, see whether or not there are any notice of violations given?
No, I don't think we have that resource available at this moment.
No, but that's not, that's not what this is for the discretionary permitting. This website is meant to help somebody through the discretionary permit process, although the county is working on a very large review and redo of the county's process from Permits Plus, which is what we're on now, to a program called Exella, which will have a public face to it. So there will be lots of information available to the public once that's done, and I don't believe the schedule for that is maybe another year and a half to be completely done and up and online.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, just to follow up on it, because I had that question. Link to the county recorder, recall, is if I'm looking at a property, one of the issues we get sometimes, particularly like the city or town or people like that, they buy the property, and then they find out there's violations that they now have to clean up. So what I normally would do is, you know, check the title and see if there's anything there. So I assume right now there's no link to the county recorder as far as violations that are affecting property?
At the moment, we don't, but we could definitely look into it.
Okay. All right, again, because that would be the disclosure to purchasers, should be important to me. When you would pull up the APN number or the address, you're not going to get full legal title, you're just going to get the APN number and the address, and that's?
Yes, yes.
Now, getting back to the zoning matrix, because it's such a wonderful forest to go through, I know for sure. So the civilian that types this up and gets what's permitted zoning, and let's just say they want to put a cemetery in open space, would that matrix be available to them to see, or is they still going to have to come to staff?
Well, that matrix is available on our zoning ordinance. So we do have, let me go back to Phase Two. We do have a link to our coastal and noncoastal ordinance where they can open up PDF, and they can locate that matrix.
And that matrix will be available?
Yes.
Well, you can open it up here, this opens up the code correctly, and then you can do a search of the word cemetery, and it will point you to every place in the code that mentions the word cemetery. And frankly, that's the way the planners do the research too, because there could be some obscure little section about cemeteries, which there is. And so you would want to know everywhere that it hits the word cemetery. So that's the way we do our research as well.
Keyword, keyword.
Okay, see, that'd be more efficient, because again, a client comes to me, can I put a cemetery on my property? Well, what's it zoned, and then we can go through the process. At that point in time, I could say it's ministerial, or you've got a long way to go, and that'll be a $15,000 retainer. Thank you. All right.
So the ordinance is fully word-circuable then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
And as are the area plans and the whole general plan as well.
Any other questions?
Was, is this your work product, or are you?
I just was one of many, one of 25 staff members that were involved in the development process.
This is excellent.
Nicely done.
Really nicely done.
Thanks so much.
Wonderful job.
Uh, no.
Yeah, I think this is going to go a long way to helping people, and I hope they, more people avail themselves of it. The main thing is, is to, I noticed it's HTTP, and, you know, just to let people know where to find it. Because you know how that goes.
Oh, yes, definitely.
It's there, but you wouldn't know how to find it unless you knew already how to find it.
Except on the Planning Division's website, it's huge.
It's huge, okay.
And so we're making, we've made a little stride on the, on the main website, but I think we even want to do a little more, and we're going to ask those folks if, you know, perhaps. You can see how big it is on the planning website right there, available now, when you just click on that.
And each of the 13?
Just don't use, don't use a little stop sign.
Oh, yes, definitely.
As your button.
And each of the 13 county agencies that participated in this process, each of their homepages, their main website homepage, has a link to the One-Stop as well.
That's fantastic. All right, thank you.
Has, has Planning or RMA done a press release on this?
Yes, we have.
Yes, there's been a press release done. We are busy writing now a letter to the MACS to make sure that they know that it's out there, writing a letter to Property Owners and Homeowners Association. We were out last week, Annie and I, at an APA event, showing people that it's there. We were applying for awards to make, to get the word out. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that the resource, which is built for, for our customers, is getting out there, the word to our customers. And I don't want to overlook Tricia Meyer, you know, she's a manager in our section. She has done a yeoman's job on this project, because it's not so easy getting 25 people together and continually, you know, making sure that the tasks are done in order to get something like this built. So between these two ladies here, I mean, they've done an amazing job. It is a lot of work, and really, really proud of it.
Yeah, on those nine, those nine buttons, those nine phases, and then there were 13?
County departments.
Departments?
Yes.
Have you gotten any, I don't know, negative feedback from people going, I can't believe it, nine phases and it's 13 departments, you know, this is what's wrong with America? Do you get?
No, we haven't gotten that response.
Okay, well, I think it's fantastic.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Just a little recommendation. You should elect a board of Realtors for Ventura County as well as the Ventura County Bar, because not only would they help them personally, but they're the people who get it, they're going to be involved with land use more than just the average citizen. So that would, I think, help advertise it.
That's a great idea, thank you.
Yeah, that is a good suggestion, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, great job.
Okay, now it is Item Seven, Discussion Report by the Planning Director.
Okay, thank you very much. Please excuse me for being a little late this morning. It was Mother's Day at preschool, and I could not let my little child be there without his mother to make muffins. And so I was rushing him through, him trying to make his little sachet for me this morning. I'm like, that's good. But yes, so sorry, I was late this morning. Couple of things that have happened. One item is the board on Tuesday did hear the HABAD, so that item had been settled. And the one change that they had made to your recommendation was to allow 10 times a year to have 100 instead of the 70. So they will be, they, meaning the HABAD, folks will be submitting the calendar of their 10 events that they want to have. And that was, seemed to be an agreeable situation for everybody, so hopefully. Let's see, I haven't forgot Commissioner Onstott, your request for the report back for the Tolan landfill. There's been a lot of work going on behind it, behind the scenes, so we're ready to do that presentation. So I will find a date, and hopefully, we will have that report back on the Tolan landfill that you requested, and then also our date that we have, our annual training, that we go forward and have a training topic. So if you have interesting things that you would like to be trained on, we are, you know, we will be doing the general plan, a little brief review of CECL, I'm sure the Brown Act. We're also going to invite all of the MAC members to, in the room at the same time, and hopefully do the training for them as well. And then we'll do the report out at the same time. So we're looking for some June, July dates. And so as soon as Danielle sends us out and we get some confirmation of a date that you'll all be there, we'll begin setting that date. And so if you have something of interest to you, we're going to do something on the Cultural Heritage Board. A lot of things that are already prepared that we do for staff or we do for presentations that we're going to bring here and probably spend a few hours in going through lots of things that we do in the Planning Division besides the things that you just see here on a day-to-day. And then, training, I think that's what I have.
Kim, is there any problem with people showing up to hear that? There's a lot of information and misinformation on the Tolan thing going around. I hear lots of weird things from lots of people I know aren't true. Is there any problem with broadcasting that in my general neighborhood so they could show up and hear?
Yeah, no, no, that will be, it will be an agendized item, so, yeah, they can show up. Who will be here for that is more than likely Bob Gallagher from the Environmental Health Department, the director of the Environmental Health Department, and Mike Viegas is the Air Pollution Control District Officer for Ventura County. So they'll both be here to do a verbal presentation on that. And then also Tricia Meyer, who was just here. She also, the mini hats that she wears, one of them is the head of the Condition Compliance Program. So it's under her staffing now to review all of the conditions of the landfill, and so she'll be here to do a report back on that as well.
Super, thank you.
Chairman Chair?
Yes.
Kim, one thing I would like to add to that, and again, it's, it shouldn't take more than about four or five minutes, is the procedural, who's on first question I like to ask. Who makes the final decisions, who's the appellate bodies? In other words, people, I feel, don't understand sometimes that the Planning Commission is not a MAC. It is a quasi-judicial authority provided for by GAFCO. But what authority does a MAC have? What input does a city have to a county? So just procedurally, what authorities are there as opposed to an advisory body? So, because I think sometimes we get a little confused who's on first. Getting inputs one thing, but decision-making is another, kind of thing. And then also, like the questions we've had up here. We make recommendations, well, what weight does that have? Obviously, the board supervisor has that authority. So again, nothing complex or overboard, but bringing up what the protocol is that we think we understand, and just that one, because I know some of those roles have changed too. And because I'm following up with that when you, when the chair's going to ask for Commissioner comments, because I have something else I want to bring up.
And then the last thing I have is?
Excuse me, Kim?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask one other question? Kind of a, that has to do with your jurisdiction issues. Does Planning have any involvement with Channel Islands Marina or Channel Islands Harbor? Since there's a lot of development on the, on the drawing board as part of the general plan down there, does Planning at all involve itself in that process, or is that separate?
Yeah, that's separate. The harbor has its own district.
Okay. So that hearing process is a separate entity, and that doesn't come here at all? Everything I ask is a curiosity, if somebody raised a question to me recently, with the proposed development and everything, and traffic mitigation issues and traffic flow, et cetera, at a critical intersection at Channel Islands and Victoria, and the introduction of additional housing, what that does in an emergency situation as in tsunami or something else? And I said, you know, I don't know, I know there's evacuation plans, but I don't know procedurally how that flows within the process, but it's not even considered in this process. It goes to, it goes to the Harbor District.
Yeah, and we could bring that back as well as a topic for the training. We could ask Lynn Krieger to come down and do a, to a presentation on that as well. Sure.
Okay.
And then the other item I had, just for your June 2nd hearing on the housing element, I have asked that the EIR be sent out to you all in hard copy. And so hopefully, that will be done well before the June 2nd hearing. So hopefully, in another week or so, that will be delivered to you in advance of the staff report.
Okay, and now Items, the Planning Commission may wish to introduce Commissioner Westner.
Chairman Chair, I brought this up to County Council just before. I visited the Moore Park Planning Commission Tuesday night, and again, this is more procedural than anything else. And I read their NMD on, it's called Moore Parkless Studios, and particularly the traffic and the land use. There were some severe questions in my mind, simply because the NMD's set they're introducing 3,000 new ADTs a day, and yet it did not trigger EIR, even though the level of service on the 118, in the county particularly, was going to deteriorate below D and to E in certain situations. And I didn't see any comment or request for comment from county. There was a letter given by Latco at the last minute, and there's some other questions here, but what I'm trying to stay with here is, what is the procedure, what is the policy of, A, the cities and other agencies? That's why I raised the question about the education. Contacting us when it's clearly identified in an NMD or a project or something like that of notification? I know we go to great lengths in notifying other agencies. And then we didn't, I didn't see it, so I know Latco somehow got notified and they sent a letter. Can you walk me through what normally would have happened with something? I know, like, when we looked at Egg City, and if there was one ADT being added, it was going to trigger a traffic study. So can you kind of bring me up to speed with the normal relationships on this? I know I had asked the county council earlier, so. Or is it like the question just got asked? They're their own jurisdiction, and we wouldn't know?
No, you know, typically, the county enjoys a very good relationship with all of the cities, and I'd have to look on this project specifically, but we get dozens every month of outside agency reviews, we call them. So from state and federal and local cities, the Harbor District, they send things to the county to review. We have one person here at the county that then takes that information in, evaluates it, see who needs to see it, and then we've just created in the last year an electronic system, because, you know, we used to get one EIR, and 12 agencies would need to see it. So we've created an electronic system, but then that goes out to the other agencies, that the, their concerns get sent back to the Planning Department. The Planning Department compiles a letter and sends that to the agency. So I mean, that's a very routine process, and I would have to look on this particular one to see who in the county would have commented on that.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. I just triggered in my mind, these things are going on, and I didn't see any evidence of the county was contacted, or Latco was contacted, or Caltrans was contacted, even though they may be a lead agency. I know on 118, that Caltrans is the responsible agency, so.
So they would have had to have been contacted.
Yeah, so, well.
Hopefully.
All right, I'm just picking it up, because again, when we went through the landfill, all the issues on the 118 and the 23, and who's on first as far as authority? So it's just like, this keeps popping up for us, and then you brought up the Channel Islands. So it's, you know, somebody does something here, and the wave just sweeps out, and we wind up. And the other reason I bring up the 118 is I know that 2,000 decision by Judge Walsh, Caltrans ordered, that they ordered an EIR for the improvement on the 118 and required an EIR. So I'm sitting there going, okay, we're adding another 3,000 trips, and they're filing and mitigating that deck, and I'm like, what? All right, that's my two pieces. Thank you.
Commissioner Onstott.
I'd like to revisit what happened here today. I didn't see the point in doing it while the applicant and the appellant were here, but I guess I, when, when something is set for a time certain, I expect it to be heard. And we're all busy people. Everybody in this room is busy and have other things to do. Everybody up here changes schedules, you know, it's a significant matter for me to appear. It's a significant matter for me to review everything, which I try to do every piece of paper before I come. And I'm very much opposed to continuances unless someone can show me just cause. And if, and had I requested, had I received a request for continuance, and had I, had it confirmed that there was no detriment to the county before we spent the time, effort, and review, I wouldn't have a problem with it. I voted no, because I didn't get that. And I'm quite frankly, I'm less than pleased. I voted no because I didn't get that and I'm quite frankly, I'm less than pleased that I have to read this for the third time probably because those people, it's highly improbable that they'll sell and, or, excuse me, settle. So, I mean, to me, when you said it for a time certain it's going to be heard and if they took the risk not to have their people here, then that would be their problem and I would have just preferred to have the matter heard, but that's my personal preference. I have one vote, but I don't know how you feel about it, but that's how I feel about it. That's all.
It was surprising not to get something, usually we're, we're very well informed. Danielle sees to it that we get it in our, in our email. So I'm not sure why Mr. Baca, that, that they referred to something that they sent a week ago. We didn't, okay, didn't... I would have to say that Brian told me yesterday that they had asked for the continuance and it was not granted. So I haven't seen whatever it was. We're writing up, it was a phone call. And we understand why it wasn't granted, I understand that, but it, but just for the heads up so that we don't, I was just happy that it was, it stuck in my mind that I didn't spend a lot of time rereading.
I did.
But I, yeah, that's unfortunate. It would have been great to have that information. Usually we're, we get it, you know, on our computers and in the email and it's, it's nice to have.
You know, since, since we're on the topic of that Planning Commissioner training session that you were planning, it might be a good idea to revisit the processes and procedures of your, of your planning commission. And that goes along well with the question that you had asked about what is the relationship between the Planning Commission and all of these other governmental entities and decision making bodies? And at what time is it recommendation? What time is it adjudicatory? What time is it quasi legislative? I think that might be helpful for you, just as a refresher as well as just to kind of see it graphically what your relationship is in this land use universe.
It still would have been nice to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree and I will check with, I'll check with Brian to see what that was. I understand it, but it still would have been nice to have a heads up. I agree. Okay. So is there anything else? Okay, so this meeting is adjourned and we'll, we'll see each other in June, right? June 2nd?
June 2nd. Is the next thing on the agenda?
How's it going on, June 2nd? Yeah.
All right. Adjourned.
Excuse me.
Oh.
You sent out the package, package, excuse me. You sent out the package Thursday or the Friday before, which is Memorial Day weekend?
That packet will be going out early for the housing element.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Is that meeting 10:30? June 2nd, 10:30. Some meeting we had at 10:30. Madam Chair, that meeting is 10:30 on June 2nd.
Okay. All right.